All right, good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock. I'll call the regular city council meeting of Monday, December 14th, 2020 to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Benson?
Here.
Councilmember Farrell?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Markline?
Right here.
Councilmember Williams?
Here.
Councilmember Wolf?
Present.
Council President Conley?
I'm here. Sounds like we're really enthusiastic tonight, so we're gonna have a great meeting, I can tell. The next item on our agenda is consideration and action on a proposed resolution recognizing Representative Deborah Colsey for her service to the City of Janesville, 44th Assembly District, and the State of Wisconsin. File Resolution Number 2020-1830. Will the clerk please read the resolution?
File Resolution Number 2020-1830. A resolution recognizing Representative Deborah Colsey for her service to the City of Janesville, 44th Assembly District, and the State of Wisconsin. Whereas Representative Deborah Colsey served in the Wisconsin State Assembly for three terms, beginning in January 2013, before deciding not to seek reelection in 2020; and whereas Representative Colsey raised her family in Janesville, and her deep concern and care for the community was apparent during her time in office; and whereas during her terms, Representative Colsey was relentless in her efforts to improve the healthcare system, support education, and promote economic growth in the 44th Assembly District and throughout the state; and whereas Representative Colsey was devoted to supporting the Janesville Transit System, demonstrated by numerous visits in Madison with JTS staff, ride-alongs on city buses to interact with her constituents, and support of JTS's capital and operating funding needs; and whereas despite her busy schedule, Representative Colsey consistently supported the city's initiatives by participating in events such as the State of the City, Riverside Park Splash Pad Grand Opening, and countless others; and whereas Representative Colsey was a consistent advocate for the City of Janesville on topics such as Janesville's inequitable portion of state shared revenue, closing the dark store property assessment loophole, establishing economic opportunity zones, and state funding support for city projects like downtown revitalization and the Monterey Area River Restoration Project. And whereas, in addition to her contributions in the legislature, Representative Colsey served her community in countless other ways, including serving as a School District of Janesville Volunteer, Board Member and Board President, YMCA Board Member, and President of the Mercy Health System Association of Volunteers. And whereas Representative Colsey's service was characterized by her calm, thoughtful, and common sense approach to working collaboratively with her peers and community members to find innovative solutions to complex community problems. Now therefore be it resolved that the Common Council of the City of Janesville recognizes Representative Deborah Colsey for her service to the State of Wisconsin, City of Janesville, and Janesville Community, and on behalf of the citizens of Janesville expresses the utmost appreciation for the contribution she made to Janesville during her years of service and in and out of the Wisconsin State Assembly.
Thank you, Dave. To say, Deb, I wish we could be in person to have this conversation with you, and thank you for all your service. I see Councilmember Markline has his hand up.
Yes, I would move to adopt file Resolution Number 2020-1830, recognizing the honor of Deborah Colsey for her service to the City of Janesville, 44th Assembly District, and State of Wisconsin.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Markline, any further comments?
I think we would be here a lot longer if we had to go through all the contributions that Representative Colsey has done for the City of Janesville in her long and esteemed career in Madison. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf?
Just want to thank Deb for all you've done for our community. I appreciated your friendship. We spent six years on the Janesville School Board together and got to know Deb very well. I hope that she's able to enjoy her retirement years, but I'm sure she'll be doing it in many other ways that will see her in the community. So, thanks, Deb. You take care.
Councilmember Williams?
Yeah, I too just wanted to thank Deb for all of her hard work over the years and look forward to what she's going to contribute in the future. Wish you the best, Deb. Thank you.
Councilmember Benson?
I'll echo what my fellow councilmember said, that thank you so much for all of your public service. It's often a thankless job, so I'm happy that we can show a little bit of gratitude tonight on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes, I want to echo all what everyone has said as well. Thank you so much for all you have done for us, and I do look forward to working with you in the future. So, thanks.
Well, Deb, I think you've been a servant leader in our community for many, many years, and you have led with integrity and compassion throughout all of the situations that you've encountered, and you've been a great role model for me personally and many people in our community. So, thank you so much for all your service, showing us the way forward, and I can't wait to see what you do next.
Thank you, Sue.
And now, yeah, yay! Let's vote. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Benson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Markline?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Councilmember Wolf, you're muted.
I'm sorry. A resounding aye.
Council President Conley?
Yes, and that passes unanimously. Representative Colsey, would you like to say a few words?
You know, when we moved here, what, 26, 27 years ago, I never thought I would know everyone on the city council personally and have so much respect for all them. And Sue and Tom, you see me, every time you see me, I cry, so I'm promising you I will not cry. Your task was to get one more vote than the next person. So, you know, I learned, and Sue, you'll find this out, I hope I did you proud by working for the city, but more importantly, I learned so much. So, the one thing I'll take away from my service there is that I learned so much, and I was so happy to be able to work across the aisle. I mean, I will say this publicly, I was glad to be able to work with Amy to get the things done that we did. You know, we had a good, great working relationship, and we did a lot for healthcare and for the city, and that I'm really proud. So, thanks, everybody. I am so honored to know all of you, and thank you for taking this moment to say hello and thanks to me, so I appreciate it very much.
Well, thanks for joining, thanks for joining in tonight. Well done.
And I have a little else to do these days, so I'm gonna stay and listen. There you go.
Oh, wow, you are more than welcome. And I assume that we gave you the resolution, or has that not happened yet, but it will, Mark?
We'll make sure that gets delivered.
Okay, great.
And can I just say, Mark, it's been a real privilege to work with you. Everybody in the Capitol knows about Janesville and the inequities of shared revenue. And I was really honored when you came with me into Walker's Office and to speak on that issue, and I, you know, I just applaud all the hard work you put into this. And I wish it could change the way we want it to, but hopefully, you know, baby steps. So, let's get some changes done.
Yep, thank you, and you've been great to work with. I wish you the best of luck. It's been an absolute pleasure.
Thanks, Mark.
All right. Next item on our agenda is public comments on items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing and on matters which can be affected by council action. All of our public comments are required to be done and submitted in writing. Did we receive any comments, Mr. Clerk, treasure?
No, we did not receive any written comments at this point.
Okay, thank you. Item five, City Manager Update, Mr. Bragtag.
Yes, good evening, councilmembers, ladies and gentlemen. We'll do the City Manager Update, and Ms. Dar will pull up our slides, so we'll wait for that to happen, and then roll through those. All right, next slide. So, a few things to just make sure the city council and the community are aware of. First of all, Janesville's Jolly Jingle Reverse Holiday Light Parade went off superbly. I took my granddaughter over there and on Saturday night, and were amazed frankly by the displays and certainly by the attendance. I think that first bullet really speaks to it with 901 cars that rolled through and about 2,700 people that came through the parade in two hours. And there were awards that were presented for the displays, and so the judge's choice was Pause for Effect Mobile Grooming Spa. The best use of a theme was Up with Dance, Wisconsin. Most Creative, the Filipino-American community. Best Use of Lights, Rock Aqua Jays Water Ski Show Team. And Best Spirit, Janesville Youth Hockey Club. And folks, I would just, you know, again, share with you, I'm so proud of the City of Janesville team and how they're working through how to continue to provide effective and quality municipal services to our community. And so, in a pandemic environment, a parade just doesn't sound like a good idea with people standing elbow to elbow on the sidewalks in our downtown. And so, our Recreation Division Director, Shelley Slaypack, and her team came up with this idea of a reverse parade. And so, we were able to do that for this event, and then back in October for the Halloween festivities. And so, again, working very hard to serve the community. Next slide. Couple of fire department updates. This first one is huge, and that is 21 of our Janesville Fire Department leaders completed Blue Card Incident Command Training. And this is training that the department's been trying to complete with their leaders, you know, over the past several years. And strangely enough, they were able to complete it, you know, during a pandemic. And so, my hat's off to Chief Rhodes and his leadership team for bringing this to the department and making sure that we got folks through the training. But it, you know, instructs, trains, evaluates, and certifies fire department officers in their supervisory and management of emergency events. And so, how fitting and appropriate for us to complete that here in the pandemic. The next thing is, you know, something from a fire prevention and safety during the holiday period is a tree has been illuminated over at Central Fire Station. It's got clear lights on it just to remind folks about holiday safety. But again, if there are any residential fires that occur up until December 31st, we will change that clear bulb out to a red bulb. And so, I encourage folks to check that out, be reminded of holiday fire safety, and hopefully we have new red lights between now and the 31st. But certainly, a nice initiative from our fire department. Next slide. And then, the council, you're certainly aware of this. You approved us to apply for a T grant, and that's a Transportation Economic Assistance Grant. And so, we've received notification that we have been awarded those grant funds, and this will assist one of our businesses on the north side of town, GoX Corporation. They are constructing an additional rail switch and spur to be able to expand their business. And so, that public infrastructure improvement will create through GoX's expansion, additional 40 jobs, and the grant itself will pay 50% of costs up to about $196,000. And so, a great initiative by our economic development team and certainly our partners at GoX. And so, we're excited about that, and certainly could not do that without Wisconsin DOT. Next slide. Just as a reminder for everybody, you know, if you have any questions about what happens in wintertime here in Janesville, we encourage you to visit our website that deals with snow and ice control. So, that's www.janesvillewi.gov/snow. And you can get information about our anti-icing operations, plowing and salting operations, what does it mean when we declare a winter weather emergency, and then certainly reporting any damaged property that occurs as a result of those snow operations. But very, very timely information. We had a presentation, I think it was here about a month ago with the council, to inform the community, and again, just reinforcing that tonight to remind folks about where they can go to get information. Next slide. And then, as we approach the Christmas and New Year's holiday period, just want to make sure folks know what our impacts will look like across the city workforce. So, City Hall will be closed on December 24th, 25th, and January 1st. Hedberg Public Library is closed on those same days, but then on December 31st, the main branch will be open from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the express branch, which is in uptown Janesville, formerly known as the Janesville Mall, will be open from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. JTS Bus Service, there's no night side service on December 24th, and no bus service in total on December 25th or January 1st. Next slide. And then, trash and recycling collection. So, as is our city policy, when your trash day comes up on a city holiday, you'll just shift one day to the right. So, for Fridays, for December 25th and January 1st, if that's your normal trash collection day or recycling collection day, that will occur on Saturday. So, you get an extra day there. Anything, any Christmas trees, wreaths, greenery, et cetera, anything that's a living material, please, you can set that out with your trash on January 4th through the 8th, and city crews will pick that up and get it to the compost site. The compost site and the demolition landfill has now officially closed as of this past Saturday, December 12th. The sanitary landfill, as a reminder, will again be closed on December 25th and January 1st. Next slide. As always, lots of ways to get information from the city. We actively push information out through press releases and on social media, and we try to be very, very responsive and respond to any calls or emails that occur within a 48-hour period. So, if you want to receive email pushes from us, which include those press releases and any important notifications to include those snow emergencies, I encourage you to go to our city website slash email list. You give us your email address and we will push information to you. You can always call us here at the City of Janesville, 755-3000 is our standard line. You can call my office here, 755-3177. We will either direct you to the right office or agency or certainly try and answer your questions if we can. Facebook, you can like us on Facebook, follow us on Twitter, receive emergency updates from JPD via Nixle, you can connect with us on LinkedIn. If you scan the QR code into your smartphone, it will take you to that email list signup sheet. And as always, I encourage you to visit our city website, which is listed at the bottom there, www.janesvillewi.gov. It is newly updated as of about a month ago. Looks great, a lot of good information, getting a lot of positive feedback on what it looks like in its user interface, if you will. And so, people seem to be pleased with the improvements. And so, that's all I have this evening. Pending any questions, happy to answer from the council.
Thank you. Councilmember Farrell.
Thank you. City Manager Bragtag, as we're all aware, the distribution of the vaccines have started today, which is a wonderful thing for our country. The question I have is, I've been doing some reading on how or whether employers can require their employees to have the vaccine. I realize I'm not an attorney, there are issues, there are probably issues to be concerned with. However, my personal opinion, I would love to see all 500 of our employees take, have the vaccine when they're able to get it. Is the city going to consider having a policy, either, I don't know whether we should go as far as mandatory, I realize there's issues with that, or strongly encouraging every city employee to get the vaccine? There's 40% of our country in a poll say they are reluctant to get the vaccine, which is disturbing and puzzling to me. I don't understand it. If that percentage would hold true with our employees for the city, it's a lot of people. Have you thought about or discussed with Wolf whether we need a policy? Is it, are we just going to hope that every employee is going to have enough common sense to get the vaccine? So, I'd like to know your thoughts on that, City Manager, on that.
Yeah, absolutely. Very timely and good question, Councilmember Farrell. I will tell you that it is a highly debated and discussed topic, certainly nationally in the state and here locally. I think that there are very differing opinions. I've read some legal opinions that say you can mandate, but you need to make exceptions for medical and/or religious reasons. I've also heard other and read other opinions that suggest that that's not appropriate. To kind of spin the council up, you know, we've been talking about what would this look like for the city of Janesville, you know, for about the last probably 45 days, because we are planning for vaccinations when they're made available, you know, for city employees. But, you know, certainly looked at that, discussed it, and the leadership team agrees that we will certainly encourage folks to get the vaccine, but we will not require our city employees to get the vaccine. But we think that one of the ways that we will be able to encourage our city employees to get the vaccine is to set the example. And so, when it's our appropriate time, both Chief Rhodes or Incident Commander and I will make sure that we get our vaccines. I would also share with the council that, you know, here in the state, I understand the state is prioritizing public health officials and then folks that are in nursing homes as the priority recipients in the state. And I think that kind of that next tranche, if you will, perhaps will be public safety officials. And so, the city has worked diligently within our Emergency Operations Center team to, you know, essentially develop a site plan and a programming plan for how we will distribute the vaccines first to public safety officials, police, fire, EMS, and then, you know, as it is expanded to other groups of city employees, what that might look like. But we're certainly prepared to do it. And like I said, if public safety is at the front of the line, Chief Rhodes will certainly be there. And, you know, for the rest of us, I'll be at the front of the line when that is available.
Thanks, thanks for your response.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments for the City Manager? Seeing none, thank you very much, Mark. Item six through 14 will be approved by consent unless a council member wishes to discuss it further. I'll read through all of them. Item number six, City Council Meeting Minutes of the regular city council meeting on November 23rd, 2020, of the closed session on November 23rd, 2020, for approval only, not release, and of the special city council meeting of December 1st, 2020. Item seven, consideration and action to adopt the City of Janesville 2021 through 2025 Strategic Plan. Item eight, consideration and action to adopt the City of Janesville's 2021 federal and state legislative agenda. Item nine, consideration and action on a proposed resolution authorizing the acceptance as city property, the Town Square enhancements, including Blaine Gilbertson Family Heritage Bridge, which includes handrail, light fixtures, seating, and resilient sculpture, the Cop Ryan Pavilion, donor wall, the bubbler, Courthouse Park lighting control, Town Square Sound and Security System, including Wi-Fi, festival poles with street lighting, banners and receptacles, and other improvements. File Resolution Number 2020-1831. Item 10, consideration and action on a Developers Memorandum of Understanding Agreement to Extend Public Infrastructure for the Prairie Woods Estates 9th Edition. Item 11, consideration and action on a proposed resolution approving the final plat of Prairie Woods Estates 9th Edition, File Resolution Number 2020-1828. Item 12, consideration and action to confirm the Council President's appointments to the Alcohol License Advisory Committee. Item 13, Final Certified Survey Map 20016-C, Farm and Fleet One Lot Along Humes Road. And item 14, Motion to Cancel the Second Meeting in December. Those will all be approved under consent unless anyone wants to discuss one further. I see Councilmember Williams hand up.
Yeah, item number nine. I really don't need to have it pulled, but I do have some questions and I want to make a comment.
Okay. Are there any other items that council members wish to discuss further? All right, seeing none. Let's, let's hold off here and then I'll tell us which ones have been approved by consent. Councilmember Williams.
Okay. First of all, with all the donations that were, that we're talking about here tonight that were given by private citizens to the city of Janesville, I just wanted to give a big thank you to all those donors that came together to help this all come together for the downtown. It's fantastic down there and I just, you know, wanted to make some comments and just not have it go under consent. But I do have a couple of questions for City Manager. I just wanted to make sure that the improvements that are being turned over to the city, is everything completed? That, and does everything working correctly, such as the bubbler and the lights and all those kind of things are, you know, I just want to make sure that when we're accepting this, everything's done? And if it's not done, are those costs of completing that or repairing or doing whatever still needs to be done, is that on the taxpayers if we accept this? Or is that, or are the donors still paying for that?
Yeah, good question. So, all the things that we're, you know, asking the council to accept as public infrastructure improvements tonight are complete and operational. If you remember, the bubbler, we did not accept the bubbler, for example, last year because it wasn't working right. They were able to get that fixed in the last year. It's now working to our satisfaction and so, we're recommending accepting. So, everything that's out there that you see that was listed here or provided by private donation money, that is in working order. The one thing that is not, and we're not recommending that we accept tonight, is the underbridge lighting on Milwaukee Street Pedestrian Bridge in Court Street. That system is not ready for primetime. They still are troubleshooting and figuring out why it's purple lights all the time. It's not supposed to be. We'd sure like to see some red and green. And it doesn't necessarily work the way that it's supposed to. So, we're not asking the council to accept that, that infrastructure, if you will. And that may be, you know, another year, for example, for them to figure that out. I don't know at this point. But everything else that's being asked to be taken on as public infrastructure, you know, is in working order and we don't have any problems with it. So, there isn't any additional taxpayer cost to kind of get it up to speed before it's accepted, nothing like that. And then, I think the other piece that's important is, is that once it becomes public infrastructure, though, so, you know, tomorrow, if, you know, there's a huge crack in the donor wall, you know, guess what? That's public infrastructure, that's on us.
Okay. All right. With that being said, then I have no objection to leaving it under consent.
Okay, thank you. So, that means items six through 14 will be approved under consent. Old Business, item one, second reading and public hearing on an ordinance repealing Janesville General Ordinance Section 6-57 and 6-97 Class A licenses issuance based on population exceeding quota and local restrictions. File Ordinance Number 2020-812. Will the clerk please read the ordinance?
Ordinance Number 2020-812, An Ordinance Repealing Janesville General Ordinance Section 697 Class A licenses issuance based on population exceeding quota, local restrictions with penalties for violation thereof as set forth in JGO 6-104.
Thank you. So, this evening, I'm going to open the public hearing and we'll hear any comments that have been submitted, but the council will not discuss this because the Alcohol Licensing Advisory Committee would like more time to talk about themselves. So, I will be continuing the public hearing until our meeting on January 25th. Did anyone submit comments for the public hearing?
Yes, we have three individuals that submitted comments.
Please read them.
Okay, the first is from Megan Tim, the Community Health Manager at SSM Health St. Mary's Hospital. Dear Janesville City Council, regarding a potential repeal of Class A alcohol licenses in Janesville, I am writing to you to share the potential health impacts for our community if this were to be lifted. A high concentration of alcohol outlets in a community leads to a variety of serious health and social consequences, including violence, alcohol impaired driving, neighborhood disruption, and public nuisance activities. One of the most effective approaches for reducing excessive drinking and its many health and social consequences is to limit the physical availability of alcohol. Both the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention at John Hopkins Bloomberg School of Public Health recommend strategies that regulate alcohol outlet density to ensure public safety. Increasing access and availability to alcohol may seem lucrative from an economic standpoint. However, having a Class A alcohol license quota for Janesville shows the community that the Alcohol License Advisory Committee and the city council are committed to improving the overall health and well-being of its community members and have a solid understanding and foundation for preventing risky behaviors in youth and adults. For public health, having our city council show such a dedication to upstream prevention efforts through initiatives like a solid Class A alcohol license quota is a major success and a long-term positive health outcome. I realize change and advancement is crucial for our thriving community. Therefore, I would urge you to solidify a meaningful quota for the city of Janesville for both businesses and community members' understanding, health, and safety. Thank you for your time. Next comment comes from Kerry Kalinsky, a JM4C board member. Councilmembers, I had the honor of serving on the ALAC for six years. We worked hard to make sure that Janesville was a safe and healthy place for our citizens. I know that you are looking at getting rid of the Class A license quota. I am recommending that you keep a quota on the number of licenses that can be given out. Why? Because according to the 24/7 Wall Street, most recent ranking of the nation's drunkest cities, 12 of the top 20 cities are in Wisconsin. Janesville is ranked number 16. Did you know that 24% of Wisconsin adults engage in binge drinking compared to 16% nationally? Alcohol is ingrained in our state and our community. Some people think it is funny. What is not funny is the increase in alcohol outlets is linked to multiple health and safety issues. These include higher rates of child abuse and neglect, increased suicide rates, STIs, cirrhosis deaths, assaults, homicide, self-inflicted, and traffic injuries. You might also be interested to know that a study in the American Journal of Preventative Medicine shows that a regulation of alcohol outlet density is a useful tool in reducing excessive alcohol consumption and related harms. Just something to think about as you make your decision. Thanks for listening. And finally, a comment from Aaron Davis, Executive Director of Janesville Mobilizing for Change. Janesville Mobilizing for Change prevents youth alcohol use in many ways. One, reducing excessive alcohol use among adults. A strong relationship exists between binge drink, adult binge drinking and youth use. A 5% increase in binge drinking among adults in a community is associated with a 12% increase in the chance of underage drinking, from CDC.gov. Research shows that one very effective way of reducing binge drinking and related harms is regulating outlet density. Studies show an association between outlet density and population level alcohol use. Increased density was associated with increased use and decreased density with decreased use. Two, compliance checks. These help ensure youth can't purchase alcohol from stores. Janesville's Class As have struggled with achieving 100% compliance. In 2018, JM4C and the Janesville Police Department checked businesses three times in two months due to a high, a high number of failures. Checks are very important but take time and resources away from the JPD. Three, reduce risk factors that contribute to use. Sexual violence and alcohol use have a reciprocal relationship. As one increases, the other does. Alcohol use increases aggression and heightens the risk of sexual violence from Fountain Hill Recovery. Sexual violence is a traumatic experience and trauma is the greatest risk factor for substance use. Those are all the comments that have been submitted.
Thank you. And as I said, we'll continue the public hearing until our meeting, January 25th. The Alcohol Licensing Advisory Committee has a meeting scheduled for Friday, December 18th, at 1:00 to continue the conversation, and that will be live streamed. So, if anyone's interested in tuning into that, by all means, please do. Right, New Business, item number one, consideration and action on a TIF agreement, TIF Development Agreement with Monterey Apartments LLC for property located at 319 West Milwaukee and 5 South High Streets for development of multifamily apartments within TID Number 36. File Resolution Number 2020-1840. And we have a staff presentation by Mr. Gail Price, our Economic Development Director. Welcome, Gail.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. Gail Price, Economic Development Director. I'm excited tonight to present to you the Monterey Apartments LLC TIF Development Agreement. This is a TIF agreement that promotes the redevelopment of the former Monterey Hotel. If we could have the next slide, please. And located at 5 South High Street with associated parking to be developed on 319 West Milwaukee and then actually wrap around on part of the 5 South High Street property. The redevelopment of the property would include 51 market rate apartments, 39 parking spaces. property would include fifty-one market rate apartments, thirty-nine parking spaces. The site is just a little over a half acre in total area. The agreement would require the project to start by March first and provide for a year for completion of the redevelopment of the project. Next slide, please. I've shown here a air photo showing the two parcels that is subject to the agreement. One includes, again, the former hotel and then the adjoining property for parking, which formerly was a theater in our downtown. That was torn down about eleven, eleven or twelve years ago, and that's provided the opportunity for parking for this project. Next slide, please. And as I noted, site's just a little over a half acre. The former hotel would be fully rehabilitated for multifamily use or would be one commercial space that would be included in that, and then thirty-nine parking spaces provided for the units. Next slide, please. My apologies, this next slide might be a little hard to see, but to give you an understanding of the scope of this project, this is a full rehabilitation. This will require some openings to be provided, additional opens, openings to be provided. It actually include the closure of some other window and doorway openings, most specifically the doorways that go out to the fire escape on the south side would be closed in. That fire escape would be removed. And the key there is that from a development standpoint, they need to create large enough and a large enough number of units to make this project viable and successful. So there are going to be some exterior changes that will be required for them to be able to go forward. This is a seven-story building. Again, it's going to preserve a majority of this art deco structure. There are going to be some minor changes to it. And this is going to have a variety of units, including studios up to two-bedroom layouts. The plan commission does need to review this and is anticipated to review this in January, the key component of which is that there are first-floor units that will be residential units, and those do have to have approval of a conditional use permit by the plan commission. Next slide, please. So the entity that's moving forward with this developer is Monterey Apartments LLC, and this will be a newly created limited liability corporation. Now, we have three partners in this development, including James Graft, Certified Parts, the current property owner, Eric Schwanke, I hopefully pronounced that correctly, of Cardinal, and Daniel O'Connell, also of Cardinal. Next slide, please. So one of the things that you have seen in previous discussions about apartment projects is what are the capital stacks? So the sources and uses of funds that are going into the project. Unlike the River Flats project, which had, I believe it was eleven sources of funds, this is much simpler because it is a market rate project. You have the equity of just over two million. You have a first mortgage of roughly six point one, and then a second mortgage, which is monetizing the pay-go of one point two five million. And so when we look at what those uses of funds are, we've got a significant expenditure in the environmental, as I noted in the staff report. And that's always one of the challenges with these kind of redevelopment projects. You have these environmental issues that need to be addressed, but they don't necessarily return revenue into a project. So that's really a key component of why we would partner on a project such as this. We want to promote redevelopment of existing building stock, but at the same time, promote other redevelopment within the West Milwaukee Street corridor. All in all, there are significant hard construction costs, just over six point six million dollars. That is a little bit higher than what was outlined in the staff report, as we had some updated numbers provided to us by Ellers and Associates. All in all, we're looking at about a nine point three million dollar project to, to make this building a viable component of our downtown and actively being used. Next slide, please. So as I noted in the staff report, this is a pay-as-you-go approach on the assistance of one million, seven hundred and seventy thousand dollars over nineteen years. So what that really is, is ninety percent of the estimated new increment. And the key with the pay-go is kind of twofold. One is that the city is not fronting upfront assistance. So we're not having to go out and create debt to be able to partner in the, in the project. The second one is that it really requires the developer to perform. So if this project is not creating the increment that was anticipated, that pay, payback will be reduced over time. It also requires the developer to complete the project and start operating it. Otherwise, they will not receive the city's assistance. And as you may recall, some past conversations with Ellers and with staff, you know, when we think about, you know, risk on a development project, this reduces the risk as much as any approach that can be done. So it really helps to partner with the project, but yet provide assurances for our taxpayers that this is going to get done in an appropriate manner. Next slide, please. So when we think about the Monterey Apartments project and how important it is, you know, this is a real key urban rehabilitation project in our downtown. And when we think about the location of this relative to promoting other redevelopment in the West Milwaukee Street corridor, this is going to be an anchor for that. And it's really going to help to promote activity, foot, foot activity, retail activity, all of those things that we want to see come together within our downtown. When we think about this property being a redevelopment site, you know, this is a key historic property. Now, the developer is not reaching out to the state for historic tax credits because it was really going to limit their ability to create the number of units and the unit configurations that made sense from a marketability standpoint. So they've chosen not to go the tax credit route, but we certainly understand that because, you know, any project has to be able to create revenue in order for it to make sense and go forward. It's very rare that anyone does development on a philanthropic basis. And as I mentioned, the pay-go assistance is the kind of safest way for the city to go to help partner on one of these projects. Subsequently, we, the city would recommend approval of Resolution twenty twenty eighteen forty approving the development agreement with Monterey Apartments LLC. I will note that Mr. Ryan Graft, on behalf of Certified Parts, and Nick Young from Cardinal are both on this team's call, and they can answer any questions that you might have directly for them. Thank you, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much, Gail. Councilmember Benson.
Thanks, Gail. I appreciate all your hard work on this and as well as the partners. I don't have any questions. I just want to congratulate you guys on working on this. It's been a long time coming, and I'm excited to see details that it's a pay-go. So the city should, the residents should feel comfortable that we are protected and we have minimal risk. When I think about these kind of TIF deals, this is a perfect project because these are, as, as you outlined, very expensive projects to renovate a historic building like that. So I think it's a great use of TIF funds. And I guess I wish the developers well and congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember Benson. Councilmember Wolf.
Gail, when you were going through the sources and uses, you stated that the second mortgage of a million, two fifty is being used to monetize the pay-go. So correct me if I'm wrong. What I'm gleaning from that is payments over the years from the pay-go will be used to reduce the debt service for this second mortgage. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. So what those initial sources of funds will be used for is to go right into the development project. They've taken on that mortgage, and they'll pass that pay-go back to pay down the debt service on that. And that's a pretty common approach that we've seen on other projects.
Okay, so all the more reason to assure completion so that the cash flow from the pay-go is available to reduce this debt. It's not paid until it's completed, right? And the first year's, first year's taxes are paid.
That is correct.
Thank you. I too, I too applaud the developers for putting this package together. It's going to be fairly transformative to that corridor of West Milwaukee Street and hopefully a catalyst for future development in and around it. So thank you much.
Thank you. Councilmember Farrell.
Thank you. Gail, a question I have, and I know it's been an ongoing issue with the Monterey Hotel possibility that there's, I guess there's going to be thirty-nine parking spaces. A couple of concerns I have with that, you, we're talking about fifty-one units. We're not even going to have apparently one space per unit. And typically, you could have some multi-use drivers. Mike, and also, I believe this is going to be outdoor parking. Frankly, if I were looking for an apartment or a condominium, I would want some underground or covered parking. My question is, it, do we feel the parking is adequate for this project? Do we feel it's going, it would be a negative to drawing renters in there? And do we feel that outdoor parking is acceptable for a project like this?
So I'll attempt to answer your question in part, but I will also defer to Mr. Young from Cardinal because certainly they're the ones taking the risk here. And so I'll back up here for a second. So what we have seen as we've continued to talk about these kind of projects is that, you know, the market's evolving, and people are moving away from being, you know, tied to their automobile. You know, my wife and I have actually had this conversation. Do we reduce the number of cars if we moved into an apartment? We certainly would do something like that. And so, you know, when we look at from a planner perspective, you have a parking lot that's immediately diagonally off of this building. You have another parking lot that is, you know, a small block to the north. Those provide adequate number of spaces. So it really goes back to, you know, what's the market, you know, ability or desire to absorb these units, given that parking configuration? Now, I think we can all say that there's a long-term perception in Janesville that parking is a requirement, and parking, parking, parking is almost as big as location, location, location. But certainly, Mr. Young and their other projects have seen, you know, less utilization of parking, and, and that really focuses back to, you know, their market, you know, what they've seen in the marketplaces in other communities. So, you know, as we continue to evolve as a community, we, we think as planners are, that's going to continue to decrease over time. But again, you know, Mr. Young, I think, could better have addressed that, just given his experiences.
Yes, and I'm happy to. Gail, thank you again for the presentation and going through everything. And city manager and council, thank you so much for having me. We're really excited to work on this project and finally get it going. Because I know it's a very integral part of, of that area of downtown, and it's going to be great to see a historic building get rehabbed, particularly to parking. I know this relates back to the project. We've, we've already started discussions, especially with Riley, having other properties in the area, and actually talking with neighboring properties just about the idea if residents need additional parking, where they can get it. Having our onsite property manager go over other options. We've seen it. For example, we did a building, a historic rehab in downtown Milwaukee, zero parking. So again, it's just talking with the neighboring properties, residents coming, knowing it, especially being downtown and the walkability. It's, it's, it's not as much of a concern as it would have been years ago. And even having abundant parking, we feel it's more than adequate to provide the tenants with some, and there's enough abundant parking nearby to ensure that we get the residents into the property.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mark Lane.
Thank you. Just to back up on the parking a little bit, Gail, when we did the, helped out on the River Flats, do you remember what the parking ratio was on that?
We're just short of one and a half parking spaces per unit.
Okay. And the talk on that one was, a lot of people that live downtown don't really need a car in these day and age. Is that what we're encouraging here also?
Yeah, we certainly believe that the market's going to continue to evolve and the desire expectation that there's a parking space, or even that you'll have tenants that actually continue to own vehicles. We're moving away from that as a society, certainly as I talk to younger professionals in the community. It is a very different mindset than what I grew up with, to be honest.
Okay. The next one might be more for Nick on this one here. Sounds like we have a year to complete, with it trying to be done in March of twenty twenty-two. Is that realistic?
Great question. I think it is. I mean, with the construction timeline on this project, the goal would be to start some of the remediation work as soon as possible. And then the actual construction timeline, because Cardinal Capital will also be the general contractor on the project, we're expecting to be right around ten to eleven months. So we're, we anticipate that there could be delays, especially what we've seen in current projects with supply chain issues related to COVID-19. So we are hoping that that is more than adequate enough time. And knowing that it could be ten to eleven months, we think it's enough time.
Okay, thank you. Back, probably back to you on this one here. Also, I believe this building has a little bit of a historical designation. How will that affect your exterior modifications?
Great question. So we really don't intend to make that many modifications, the exterior. The exterior itself is stable. We've talked with the engineers about it. The main modification we are making is the current elevator shaft is not adequate. So we do need to add an elevator shaft, a new elevator on the, you call, I guess, the northeast side of the property. But otherwise, the plan is to have storefronts on the front side that holds a lot of that historic appeal, but also, you know, brings a new, modern flair to the building, showing that it's an upgraded building.
Right, thank you. And then the last one is more for Gail here. I'm seeing a tax payoff eighteen or twenty years with a guaranteed tax. Does that tax go up each year to help with inflation, or how does that work?
Yeah. So what we've assumed in the, in the TIF Development Agreement is a one percent increase in value annually over time. What we have seen here in the recent terms is that we typically had two to five percent, you know, annual increase in values in the downtown. We think that provides enough cushion that in case that there is a backslide in a year, that's not going to be a significant impact on, on the developer or on the TID. So there is an assumption that there will continue to be appreciation in the value of the project. And certainly, with the discussions that we've had with the other three projects that have either, you know, mostly completed or partially completed or under construction, we're already seeing adjustments to rents because the market's bearing it.
Okay. Two more questions. One, in the breakdown here, you talked about the land and the environmental. Is the environmental, is that the, what we might find inside the building?
Yeah. So, you know, given the age of the building, we know that the windows are full of asbestos. A lot of the flooring is going to be asbestos. So there is going to be some significant remediation to deal with those issues as they move the project along. And whenever we've got those kind of remediation issues, the developer has to take significant different steps in how they do the demo, how they address those things. So for instance, when those windows are removed from this building, they have to be removed individually as a whole unit, and then dropped in a bag sealed, and they have to go in their own dumpsters. So, you know, that's a lot different than just having somebody pull a window out and pull out all the woodwork around it and then replace it with a new window. So, you know, those are additional costs, and that's what helps to make these redevelopment projects more challenging, just because those costs and those steps that have to be taken are significantly different than on maybe a newer remodel.
And the land, what is the land part of this?
Well, you know, there's a transaction between the two parties as to what the value of the land is. So that is assumed as part of the development costs in the transaction. And that is very typical that we see in other, all, all. And that is very typical that we see in other, all the other projects we've done.
Okay, that'd be land and building?
Yeah, there'd be land and building, you know, yeah, absolutely.
The whole package. Okay, you're buying the building. Or, so my words. The other one is, just for curiosity's sake, do you have an estimated market range of rents? What we're looking for for rents on this? We're calling a market rate. What are we considering market rate for these projects at this date?
What we've seen is, in the neighborhood or north of a dollar thirty a square foot, but I could ask Mr. Young to further address, because I know they've done some more market research since we've started our analysis. Okay.
Yeah, no, great question. So, market rents here, because these are gonna be market rate units, you know, we're gonna have an upscale fitness facility in the basement. We're looking at rents somewhere between seven hundred and fifty. I think the highest rent we're looking at right now is for the, is right around fifteen hundred for the largest two-bedroom suite. But typical rents for the one-bedrooms are in the mid-nine hundreds. So, it's actually less than you'd see at some of the other new comparables. But again, that comes down to it being downtown. The units are slightly smaller, just based on the square footage of the building itself, and having to work around the historic nature of it. So, yeah, mid-nine hundreds is what it looked like for a typical one-bedroom.
Right. We've had three fairly successful startups here, and you'd be the fourth major one of rentals, and with market or subsidized rates, and they're filling up quicker than they think. When are you anticipating putting out marketing, in case people wanna start planning ahead? Maybe they're thinking this is a great place to retire, or a great place to move to, and they wanna make plans, especially if you're gonna open up next spring. When do you anticipate doing marketing on this?
Great question. We traditionally look into four to six months prior to substantial completion, because that's when we have a good idea of where the construction is in process, and we can start to develop a, at least, month or timeframe when we can open. We traditionally like to have just a few months after we start construction, a website available, and if people want to inquire. But we'll typically do leasing about three months prior to completion.
Great. Good luck with your project. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Councilmember Wolf. Councilmember Wolf, did you want to ask any other questions?
He's muted.
No.
No, okay.
Sorry again. Again, seeing no other hands up, I will move Resolution Number 2020-1830.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Markline will second.
Thank you. Markline, anything further, Councilmember Wolf?
Nothing further.
Anything more from Councilmember Markline?
Yes, I think our community has been waiting for a long time to see something happen to the Monterey Hotel. And I think this is probably the best we could hope for, and I think it's actually gonna be better than we hoped for. But there'll be a lot of eyes on this project, trying to keep an eye on it. Some may criticize the city for putting one point seven million into it. However, as we see and hear, almost half of that is the environmentals. And that's gonna happen to any building downtown. And so, the question is, do we tear it down and start over and forget about the environmentals, or do we try to rehab and keep this building in place? So, I think the city investment in this is, one, to help our downtown, two, to help our residents find housing, and three, to keep some of our historical buildings standing. And I'm happy to see Cardinal step forward and push this project through, and I wish them all the success in the world. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member wishing to comment on the motion? I will join in and congratulate the team on getting this to all come together. I'm very happy to see this building being reused in this way, and I can't wait till the open house, because I wanna go through. So, thanks to everyone. With that, will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Benson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Markline?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Hi.
Council President Conley?
Yes. That motion passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone. We'll move on with the Gail Price Show. Gail is going to have presentations for the next three items as well. So, New Business Number Two is Consideration and Action on a Proposed Resolution Authorizing the City of Janesville to Extend Tax Increment Financing District 2020, an Additional Year for Housing Purposes. It's File Resolution Number 2020-1838. Mr. Price?
So, if it's okay with the Council President, I would like to present both the extension of 2022 and 2029, since they are extremely similar.
Sounds great. Thanks.
Excellent. If we could have our slide deck, please. Maybe you're seeing it already, and I'm not. Excellent. Thank you, Maggie. So, tonight, what we are doing is presenting to you an extension of two successful TID districts for housing purposes. And so, we've actually adopted this process as a policy. We take successful districts and extend them to create additional funds for housing programs as we move those forward. Now, state statute allows us to be able to do this through resolution with the city council. This does not have to go to the Joint Review Board. The statute requires that seventy-five percent is provided for affordable housing, and there's a specific definition for that, and then twenty-five percent for existing housing. You may recall that we did this in 2021, which was a real key component of providing two hundred thousand dollars for the River Flats project, which really helped be one of those components to help close the gap on that project. Next slide, please. So, 2022 is the Industrial Beloit Avenue TID District. Now, much of this district is actually covered by TID 36, but it was the impetus to really move forward in our southern part of the city for industrial development. But now, we're at that point where we've really completed the project plan. If we extend it for a year, we'll have enough revenue for debt service, and then also, we'll be applying that towards housing programs. Next slide, please. And the second one is 2029. This is not one that we've talked a lot about, because we really haven't had a lot of activity within this district. This was developed as redevelopment TID for that southern end of Milton Avenue, really around Mount Zion. So, it was used to help promote the redevelopment of the former hardware store at the southeast corner of Mount Zion and Milton Avenue. It was also used to redevelop the old AMP, which had been Basics and Rogan Shoes, you know, further there to the west, and then also provided for the NAPA auto redevelopment. Next slide, please. So, both of these TID project plans have been basically completed. So, 2022 is partially overlaid by 2036. So, that's really moving forward those future industrial, you know, projects. 2022 is basically at its end of being able to have additional expenditures. So, it's really appropriate to go ahead and close it at this time. 2029 really has no overlay. We do have the recent 2038 that's adjacent to it, but it does not overlay it. Again, both were successful. They've created excess funds. The other piece about 2029 is that other projects that were identified as possible improvements, like the intersection of Mount Zion and Milton Avenue, is actually gonna be implemented by WISDOT. So, that, you know, why not allow them to use their funds to do those improvements rather than us? But here's the real key. When we think about the amount of revenue that's created by the extending these two districts, I mean, we'll have one point three million from 2022, and 2029 will capture approximately eighty, eighty-three thousand. And when we think about what that looks like, you know, for affordable housing, we're looking at over a million dollars that can be set aside for affordable housing, and that can be applied to anywhere in the community. So, if we have somebody come forward with another light tech project, similar to River Flats, anywhere in the community, we will have a source of funds to be able to help promote that development and move that forward, you know, consistent with the mission of our housing division and all the, you know, needs that they see on a daily basis. The remaining twenty-five percent, again, can go anywhere in the city, but that has to be applied towards existing kind of housing. So, you know, housing rehabilitation kind of programs is really what we're looking at there. Next slide, please. You know, when we think about the extension of these and, you know, the creation of these additional funds for these programs, it's just so important to be able to do this citywide. The City of Janesville is actually seeing a lot of interest in other, from other communities in the creative approaches that we're taking to meet the needs for our affordable housing and to help promote additional investment in our housing stock. And this is just another great opportunity to do that. So, subsequently, the city would recommend adoption of File Resolutions 2020-1837 and 2020-1838 to extend these two TID districts for housing purposes. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Farrell. Councilmember Farrell, you're muted.
Gail, we've had some conversations about 2029 over the past several years. My concern is that that TID has gone up every year. I think it's, I think I remember it had a balance of about three hundred grand in it. I guess I just wanna make sure, we're proposing, will you leave that TID open another year for housing purposes, and then we will close the TID sooner than what we're allowed to close, prematurely, I guess, is what I'm saying. Am I correct on that?
Yeah. So, I wouldn't call it premature, close the TID. We have successfully implemented a majority of the components of that project plan. And when we see that there's another opportunity for somebody else to pay for an improvement, we're gonna do that. And certainly, that's certainly what's gonna happen with the DOT, with that intersection out there, with Mount Zion and Milton Avenue. So, it would be appropriate for us to go ahead and make that closure. Now, with regards to the fund balance, that will be equitably redistributed back to the taxing jurisdictions, you know, as we close that and move forward on that. So, you know, they're gonna receive, you know, a chunk of funds, because we've, you know, secured them over time. But, you know, as we've gone through that analysis, we recognize that there's really not much more for that particular TID to do to move forward. And given that we've got 2038 right next door, you know, if there is some change, you know, we can look at that project plan as to how to address whatever that other need might be. But it's really hard to say without a crystal ball.
Right. I would agree with our strategy on this. I think, as you said, there's been no activity in that TID for a long time. I think the idea of saying we're gonna leave it open for a year and then close it, I think is a good thing, even though other, the other taxing bodies get part of the money. That's fine. The part that we get in our, the part that the city's entitled to, that will go into the general fund. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, unless we identify another place for it to be utilized, you know, similar to what was done in 2021. So.
Okay. Great.
In general, most of the time, it's back to the general fund.
Okay. Thanks a lot. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilmember Wolf.
Gail, just to reiterate, so it's clear, seventy-five percent of the combined balance was about a million sixty thousand dollars, and that can be used for affordable housing projects anywhere in the community, anywhere in the city limits, I would assume, not just within TIF 29 and TIF 22, correct?
That is correct. So, anywhere in the city doesn't even have to be our target area. So, it could be essentially any neighborhood.
But it has to be in affordable housing projects.
Correct. That seventy-five percent does have to be an affordable project.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Gail? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion for File Resolution Number 2020-1838, Councilmember Wolf?
My hand is up. I will move, do you wanna do this as one motion or two?
Let's take them individually, please.
I will move File Resolution 2020-1838.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilmember Williams? Anything further, Councilmember Wolf?
No. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
No, thank you.
Council President Conley, I guess I will comment that this is, has to be approved by the Joint Review Board, correct, Gail?
Yes.
And that meets on Thursday, Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Markline? Councilmember Markline, you're muted.
Thank you. Will this go into effect for, starting at the first of the year then, for calendar year 2021, or will it wait one more year?
So, it'll actually close at the end of 2021, and then the 2022 increment will be captured. And I would like to retract my comment to Councilmember Wolf. I was looking ahead to the next item. This does not have to be reviewed by the Joint Review Board. This is done only by resolution with the city council. Now, the next item does have to be approved by the Joint Review Board. So, my apologies.
Councilmember Wolf, you're muted. There we go.
Mine as well. I jumped one ahead as well. Thanks, Gail.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the motion made by Councilmember Wolf, seconded by Councilmember Williams, to adopt File Resolution Number 2020-1838? Seeing none. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Benson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Markline?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Hi.
Council President Conley?
Yes. So, that motion passes unanimously. Now, we'll move on to File Resolution Number 2020-1837, which extends the Tax Increment Financing District Number 29, an additional year for housing purposes. What are the wishes of the council?
I'll move that we adopt File Resolution Number 2020-1837.
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Farrell? Councilmember Farrell, you're muted.
I second the motion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Williams, any other comments?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Councilmember Farrell?
The only comment is kinda what I mentioned before, that TID district is in my area, and I've seen no activity the last few years. And I think our, what we're going to do with this is a good thing for our community. And rather than just have a TID sit there idle for a year after year, so I'm all in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member wishing to comment? All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Williams, a second by Councilmember Farrell to adopt File Resolution Number 2020-1837. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Benson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Markline?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Hi.
Council President Conley?
Yes. Well, that motion passes unanimously. Next is New Business Number Four, Consideration and Action on a Proposed Resolution Approving Amendment Number One to the Project Plan for Tax Incremental District Number Twenty-Three, File Resolution Number 2020-1839. Mr. Price? to the project plan for tax incremental district number 23, File Resolution Number 2020-1839. Mr. Price?
Excellent. Thank you. If we could have the slide deck? So state statute allows for amendments to tax increment financing project plans based on a specific process that they've laid out for us. So when we think about a project plan, you know, planners, we talk about plans being amenable. And basically, if we could figure out every plan that was going to go exactly how it would be implemented, we would never need to do this. But we realistically have to recognize that plans need adjustment and amendments over time. So the statutes do allow for an amendment to these plans. But basically, in an initial review by the Joint Review Board, the Plan Commission holds a public hearing with regards to their request, basically reviewing that for consistency with city plan and city land use plans. It gets presented before the city council for approval, and then the Joint Review Board, again, sees it after council action for adoption, which is basically approval of a resolution approving the change. Next slide, please. So this particular tax increment finance district is the east side of downtown, so north of Milwaukee Street, really covering those initial blocks, you know, along Main Street and along Parker Drive and along Parker Place. And what drove this was the redevelopment of the Heding Schultz Building in 2002. And that building, most recently, has been referred to as the Carriage Works. And the district really focused on a couple of key areas. One was assistance for redevelopment, and that was the major project. But then also some streetscape projects, specifically Main Street, Milwaukee, and Parker Drive. Next slide, please. As this implementation has gone forward, though, it's been significantly different, and projects came forward that didn't really anticipate. And then when you look at how we've implemented some other projects, we've had other sources of funds. So specifically, the Main Street, Streetscape, has been completed with other funds. We're planning on using TID 36 for completion of the Milwaukee Street. A portion of Milwaukee Street's already been done with the bridge work. But we've also, you know, identified that we could drop Parker and Wall Street improvements. And if we want to come back to those, we can certainly look at that with TID 36. The other key piece is assistance with redevelopment. So the Heding Schultz Building had a couple of TIF project approvals with that. But then also Prospect 101, there were two specific TID projects associated with that. And those numbers were significantly more. So when we think about the assistance that was in the original project plan, it was a little, right around $350,000 total project assistance, where we've actually seen $1,350,000 in a project assistance for those two redevelopment projects. Next slide, please. And so, you know, one of the things about where we're at with this TID project plan and the overall closure is that right now we cannot close this before 2024. And that is because of the second loan with the Prospect 101 building. And so because if we were to go ahead and close it, they would be forgiven on the balance of their loans. So because we've got to keep this open for that, we're going to have additional significant increment. And one of the things that we've identified and we more recently done is when we've had a successful TIF project plan being implemented, and it meets the requirements of state statute to provide a share with another TID district, and most specifically 36. We've done this two other times. TID 33, which is the Mercy TID just north of downtown, has got a TID share with TID 36. TID 32, which is the East Side Industrial Park, is sharing with TID 36. And then we are proposing with this project plan amendment, a half million dollar TID share over four years with the downtown. So our total project costs in the TID project plan amendment do go up to $2.1 million and some change. Next slide, please. Now, when we think about its effectiveness in the geographic area of these two TIDs, TID 23 is completely overlaid by TID 36, the comprehensive downtown district. And so when we think about the overall goals of promoting redevelopment with our downtown, it's certainly appropriate to take an increment from TID 23 and apply that towards some of the other debt service or some of the other things that we've got going on in TID 36 to help promote additional redevelopment. And as you may recall, you know, we have taken on significant debt to implement the Town Square project. And this just helps to ensure that we've got adequate increment to pay off that debt service as we continue to move forward. The key there is that the sooner that we pay off debt service, the easier it's going to be in the long term for us to provide assistance for other projects, similar to the Monterey Hotel, to promote other redevelopment within the downtown. Next slide, please. So in this project plan amendment, you know, we do modify the plan accordingly to recognize that we've had some changes in the implementation of this plan. We are proposing this share to the downtown to help pay debt service in TID 36, which does have quite a few more years. But again, if we've got this opportunity, we should, you know, utilize it and certainly look forward to that moving forward. Again, we're really similar goals. We're trying to advance the redevelopment of our downtown. We've made this a significant and incredible investment in the Town Square. This helps us to be able to pay down that debt service in the near term. Subsequently, the city would recommend adoption of this file resolution that would approve Project Plan Amendment Number 21 for TID 23. I'd be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Gail. Any council member with questions? I don't see any hands raised. What are the wishes of the council? I'll make the motion that we adopt File Resolution Number 2020-1839. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
Councilmember Williams, thank you. Gail, I think this is a smart use of those funds. And certainly, all the work that's gone on downtown, including in this TID, have made a world of difference for our downtown, and we want to keep it going. So thank you for bringing this forward. Councilmember Williams, anything else to add?
No, I have nothing. Thank you.
All right. Any other council member wishing to comment? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Benson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Council President Connolly?
Yes. So that motion passes unanimously. Thanks a lot, Gail, for all your work.
Thank you.
New business number five, common council announcements. Do any council members have any announcements? I would just like to say that it's our last meeting in the year 2020. I think we're all happy to see 2020 come to an end. And city staff and all the volunteers that serve our community really have done a great job, I think, this year of adapting and continuing to work really hard to do what we need to do to keep the city moving forward. So thank you to everyone who has been a part of that. New business number six, and this will be a motion, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session, which I will read. And then I just want to remind council members that you will need to exit out of this teams meeting and log back into the special teams meeting. Item six is consideration of one or more motions to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85 Sub 1 Sub C, for the purpose of considering and taking action concerning the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically Janesville City Manager Mark A. Frytag. Is there a motion to approve?
So will Councilmember Mark Klein?
Thank you, Councilmember Mark Klein. Is there a second?
Second, Councilmember Williams.
Councilmember Williams. So we have a motion by Councilmember Mark Klein, second by Councilmember Williams, to go into closed session. Will the clerk please call the vote?
Councilmember Benson?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrell?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Wolf?
Aye.
Council President Connolly?
Yes. Thanks, everyone. We'll see you in a few minutes.